Board of County Commissioners to order, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your God we gather here to be about the hands and tools of justice for all. Let our words and thoughts be pleasing in your eyes. We ask for your countenance and grace to bring rain to our area. And for those who seek to be a part of government here today, let our words and actions be pleasing in your sight. In your name we pray, amen.
Well done Gabby, I think the microphones are working well. Either that, or I've learned how to push the button on. I really don't have any comments this morning, but I think we have two matters to change the agenda. Lon, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we add two items. And one is with regard to the sewer district three resolution. And the second one is regarding the adult corrections appointment of Robert, or excuse me, appointment of Robert to the adult corrections board.
All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No, that's why I had to rephrase what I was saying.
Has everybody had a chance to review the materials contained in the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those items. Well, I've got it on and I've got it about as close as I can get. I would move that we approve those consent agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now's the opportunity for the public to address the Board of County Commissioners. Invite you to the stand and tell us any concerns that you have. It'll be limited to five minutes or less, according to Mr. Drew's public timer. And does anyone want to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on then to the business items. And first up on our agenda is from the Economic Development Corp, Lana DuVall. Good morning.
Good morning. A few things to share, we have been fortunate enough to find an employee, which as you'll hear a little later is pretty huge in this market to be able to find one of those. And we welcomed Grant Lenenberger, local kid, to our team last week, was his first week on the job. A portion of his salary is actually paid by Small Business Development Center. They came to us and offered us a contract fee to hire someone specifically to do the entrepreneurial support work, business plans, helping with finance, packaging, that type of stuff. And that person actually works for the corporation, but again, we get some of the funding from SBDC to help pay for that position. So we're excited to have him on board. We do have a significant amount of time spent on entrepreneurial efforts, which is wonderful. We love to see people wanting to start their own businesses and create their own destinies. But they are very time-consuming cases, so it'll be really nice to have somebody on board who can assist with that. His other duties will largely be related to workforce. Again, that's kind of top of mind awareness, I think, for all of us. And to that end, we have worked with Newman University to offer some additional degree programming in the community. They're working closely with Garden City Community College so that we can have students from this region, graduate from high school, go directly into Garden City Community College. All of those credits will transfer into Newman to complete degrees. So right now, we're looking at some ag business degrees, computer science, healthcare, RN to BSN degrees, which are very important out here, and education, which again, those things that we know we have significant challenges in recruiting folks, we feel those are great opportunities to work with them. The county employees, the county employees who came to the discussions with Newman regarding law enforcement degrees and computer science, and they did a tremendous job representing the county and talking about the needs that the county currently has. What we know is it's not just about access to education, while we think that's probably the largest issue we have in this region, we just do not have service nearby. You know, Fort Hayes and Barkley College are the closest to us. But again, our students have to leave the community to get those degrees, and that creates challenges for us. We no doubt live in a higher education desert, and I think that's one of the things we have to address as a community if we intend to continue growing at the pace we've been growing over the past decade. So it's not just about education, it's also about pay, it's about benefits. You know, we talked to employees who are looking for work, and one of the things that people had kind of shied away from over the past five or six years was that they weren't looking at the whole package. They weren't looking at the retirement benefits perhaps, or the health insurance, those types of things. I think one of the things the pandemic brought to mind for those who are seeking jobs is that that stuff is important. They do want to ensure that they're preparing for their future and not just making more money today. So I think it does provide some opportunities, especially for the public sector, where pay isn't necessarily the greatest thing we can do. We really need to be packaging up those benefit packages and helping ourselves to promote our workplaces to those employees. Beyond that, again, the things that we all know are important, we have to have housing and we have to have childcare in order to recruit the workers that we need. We're working closely with our larger employers to ensure that we create housing solutions, but that's only a part of the problem. We have a lot of smaller employers who absolutely need people. We just simply don't have the places for them to live when they get here. So we'll continue to focus on that, where again, you know, I told you the last time, we've got somewhere over a thousand units of apartments that are in some level of development. That will be huge. Getting people into the community, even if it's in a rental situation to start with, at least gives us the opportunity to get them settled here, hopefully get them ingrained in our community. And then when housing to purchase comes available, they have the opportunity to do that. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
What, as far as education goes, help me out to better understand the announcement, and for in particular county employees that maybe want to try to get back to school, so to speak. What's the process and do we have to work with Kelly and HR with the colleges? How do you understand that?
Yeah, I think there'll be multiple ways that folks can come into that education system. So obviously, we like to look at it through a systemic approach. We really like the idea of introducing our students to the opportunity while they're still in high school, so they can start with those Garden City Community College classes, get those first two years out of the way, and then a seamless transition into the four-year degree programs. We also have a lot of adult learners, to your point, a lot of folks who are already employed in the community who would have opportunities to advance if they had the educational opportunities at hand. So Newman is very aware of that. A lot of the discussions that we had with various focus groups was really around, how do we create the right educational opportunity, not just for students who get to go through the process and do a more traditional pathway, if you will, but also for adult learners? How do we bring them back in? One of the things that Newman does that I think is really setting the stage for future work is that they do work-based learning as a part of their degree programs. So up to 12 hours of their credit hours will come from work-based opportunities, which is what our employers have asked for, they've said, get them in the door, let us show them our culture, let us start training them on those essential skills that are important to us, while at the same time getting them the college work, the coursework that they need to have to get the degrees. So I think, yes, I think, you know, you could go through an HR department, it could be a county employee going to their supervisor and saying, hey, I'd really like to pursue additional training opportunities. Newman is certainly willing to work with any of our employers who would like to do tuition assistance or in some other way, help to encourage their employees to go through that process. But I think as a community, we're getting to kind of make these decisions together and design what's really going to work well for our population base.
Thank you, any other questions for Mr. DuVall?
Couple of questions, or comments. Do you still go to, send somebody to Larry for the conference or the show?
The World Ag Expo, yes, I still go to that on behalf of Creta.
Okay. Second, when you, we talk about education, you might, if you got a chance, or if you can comment, I don't know about the junior college in the Extension District.
Well, I guess, I guess we can bring that up, thank you Commissioner Jones. Yeah, so we've started looking for some opportunities for the community college to expand their building trades program, as well as their ag science program. They are really out of space. They've done a tremendous job of stepping up and meeting the needs of direct employers like Tyson and Empirical, but unfortunately, that industrial maintenance program takes a lot of space on the campus. So one of the things that we talked about was if there was an opportunity to partner with K-State's research station and see if maybe we could put some students out there. Again, they have, they have several buildings on the site, and obviously, they do agricultural research. So we would like to think that the ag science programming could pretty well marry up with what they've got out there, and we're hopeful that there may even be building space that would be available for our construction trades program. And we think there's a lot of benefits to that. K-State offers construction trades as a bachelor's program. Obviously, they offer ag science programs. So there could be some good opportunities for them to allow our Garden City Community College students to start there. And hopefully, those folks would, would want to continue to a bachelor's degree and move on. So we reached out to Commissioner Jones to see if he could start some discussions with K-State. And as of last week, those discussions have at least gotten underway. So hopefully, we'll be able to work something out. We'd like, obviously, to save public dollars if we don't have to build new facilities and can create some opportunities to share space that's already built and allocated for education. We think there could be some real benefit there.
Anything else? Thank you Lana, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Health Department budget, budget signature request. In our packets, a grant application signature was requested for Fiddy County Health Department, SFY 2024. It's a form requirement to the state of Kansas.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe as we enter into Shruti's report that we need to convene as a Board of Health, and I would move that we do so.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we convene as the Board of Health for the purposes of taking up this issue. And Shruti, good morning.
Good morning.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Aye.
Hi, good morning. Every year, we apply for grants from KDHE, and this, I've provided a list of the grants that we have made applications for. First thing to note is that this list does not include the COVID-related grants. Those grants, we have, we have received those funds and those, some of those are still pending and will be carried over to the next grant year. You mentioned SFY 2024, that is the financial year for the grant. It starts in July, on July 1st of 2023 and goes through June 30th of 2024. For today, the grants that we have, we are requesting money for our family planning, maternal and child health, public health, emergency preparedness, immunization action plan, and state formula. I, I, I have a little short presentation which talks about the different activities that we do under various grants, and I'll go into that now. For family planning, the purpose of the grant is to create activities that inform and, that inform the public and create means for everybody to exercise their reproductive freedoms. And so under, under this grant, we have health promotion and educational activities. For example, we go to the Garden City Community College several times a year and we engage with the students. We give information about various STDs, how to keep track, make sure that you don't get infected, what to do in case someone gets infected. We make, we give them information about contraception and what to, what to do in case somebody would like to be pregnant. So that's sort of the education that we carry out with various entities in the, in the community. We have direct clinical services under family planning. We have an APRN who provides family planning services, including well-woman checks. She provides contraceptive services. These services are especially important because the hospital does not provide them. And so our clinic is one of the major providers of these services. We provide referrals as needed. We do pap smears and breast exams. So whenever referrals are needed for more care, we provide them as appropriate. And we collaborate and coordinate with local entities. You will see that this goal or activity comes under every single program. And the reason is that no health services can be provided without coordination and collaboration. Our aim is to build a system that functions for everybody and takes care of all needs. Under the family planning program, the match, the state requires a 40% match. So whatever is the amount that the county, that is provided by the grant, 40% of that will be, will be needed from the county. The second program under the list is the maternal and child health program. This caters to the health of mothers, infants, children, and youth. It caters to children from, from zero to, mainly population from zero to 45 years of age. The purpose of, this is a broad-based program, and the purpose is to develop and strengthen local systems of healthcare. Again, under this program, we provide health education and promotion, direct clinical services, and referral. Some of the services under the maternal and child healthcare are, can be healthy exams for children. Any, any exams for, you know, well-woman checks for women, especially when they are intending to be, to be pregnant. Prenatal exams, follow-up during the pregnancy. We have, for this grant year, we have, we have applied for a new activity, which is home visiting services. We had home visiting services several years ago. I think they were discontinued for some reason. Currently, the state is promoting universal home visiting, and we have applied for that. That portion of the grant does not require a match. And so whatever amount of money is, is granted by the state, that would be used towards home, home visiting. Our aim for this new activity, our aim for the year would be to, to recruit home visitor one or two and, and to have them adequately trained, and which requires several courses as well as shadowing in neighboring counties where home visiting services already exist. And then if, if we are able to get that done, depending on how soon we are able to get that done, we'll have, we'll have them start services. The reason we are, we are asking for more time for recruiting is that we've had a lot of difficulty finding qualified staff in the past year. And for that purpose, under this program, we have applied for two positions. One would be a CNA position. CNAs are relative, are easier to find than RNs. And the, one of the reasons being that there's a lot of CNAs being produced in the Garden City Community College. So the, and so there's a lot of availability of CNAs here. So we have applied for a CNA and a part-time RN or LPN who would be helping with the CNA. This program would also collaborate and coordinate with local entities. We talked about this in my previous conversation with you. There are a lot of gaps in maternal and child health services in the county because of the dearths of obstetricians in, in our community. And one of the aims under this program, one of the things that we are trying to achieve is to be able to support the obstetricians that are, that are there in the community by, by taking care of activities such as health education, prenatal risk assessment, et cetera, that would reduce the burden on the specialized services, service providers. Again, for the maternal and child health program, the state requires a 40% match. The next program, the next grant that we are applying for is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. This, this, this grant program provides funds to help us prepare for, respond to, mitigate, and recover from disasters. The disasters include infectious diseases, terrorism, mass casualty emergencies. So under this program, you, we are required to carry out several activities, including health and medical response planning and coordinating with emergency management, collaborating with regional counties for disaster preparedness. The, the grant usually has a work plan that we abide by, which provides activities throughout the year that we report every quarter. And performing those activities helps us become ready and also assess our readiness for disasters for when they were to happen. The Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant recommends a 10% match, but no match is required. The next program on the list is the Immunization Action Plan. At our clinic, we provide the vaccines for children. We are a vaccines-for-childen provider, and so this is a grant that's open to all VFC providers. The vaccine for, vaccines-for-childen program provides free vaccines to uninsured and underinsured children. And this program, this grant program helps us be prepared for meeting those requirements. So that would be, you know, managing everything to do with vaccines. That would be the cold chain requirements, to order, receive, manage public vaccine, also to carry out epidemiological monitoring, reporting, and action. We also perform health education and promotion pertaining to vaccines. For example, we, we go to the school district and we, we carry out outreach sessions which would make it convenient for people to get vaccines, especially school-required vaccines. No match is required under this program. The last grant program that we want to apply for is the State Formula. That, that is a sort of catch-all program that KDHE has. It supports and strengthens local health department for foundational public health services, which include assessment, all hazards, preparedness, policy development and support, community partnership and development, organizational competencies, addressing health equity, and social determinants of health. This program allows us to spend money, this grant allows us to spend money on, on activities that may not be supported through other grants or on activities that we would like to try out. So there is a lot of leeway under this grant to spend the money. This grant requires a 100% match from the state. Now, another thing to note is that the, the amount of money that has been allocated under the last three grants, that is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Immunization Action Plan, and State Formula is prefixed based on the population formula. So that is the amount, the amount listed in your packets is the amount that we will be getting. The amounts that are listed for family planning and maternal and child health grants are what we are asking. They may or may not be what is actually funded. I think the state goes by a population plus X formula. So there is a base population amount that we will, we will get. And then based on the activities that are planned and proposed, and based on other factors, we, we will get additional money.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your report Shruti, and appreciate what you and the Health Department are doing with regard to our county operations. Two questions, one, you've referenced several times cooperation, collaboration with local entities. Does that include, and you referenced the hospital in one, in one case. But does that include Genesis and the hospital? And are there some other primary entities that you can think of that you're collaborating and cooperating with?
Yeah, yes, that, that does include Genesis. And I mean, based on the grant, there are, for each program, there are several entities that we collaborate with specifically. For example, for maternal and child health grant, we work a lot with RCDC, with Genesis. For family planning, we work with ABC Pregnancy Services. We work with EDW, that is the Early Detection Works. So based on the specific program, we work with a lot of entities. And overall, for the purpose of development of systems and development of the referral chain, we work with a lot of entities, including the Libel, Fiddy County Health Coalition. We, the purpose of the collaboration is to make sure that the, there is a referral chain that works. And then, and then also, there are specific skill sets that each, or competencies that each organization has. And instead of replicating those, we don't have the luxury to replicate those competencies. So we try to help fill the gaps that are existent in the community after we take account of those competencies. So for, for example, one of the things that I mentioned was the obstetricians. So right now, we have very few obstetricians in, in the women's clinic, as well as Genesis. So right now, we have very few obstetricians in the women's clinic as well as Genesis. And so one of the things that we are trying to start now is, you know, supporting them through providing maternal and child, maternal education, prenatal education through our outreach efforts. And if granted, the home visiting services would supplement that. But that is the purpose, to build a referral chain which is strong enough to help develop the system as a whole for the community. And so all the organizations that are here, we are in discussions with several of them. So Compass Behavioral Health being another one, then Garden City Community College being another one, to be able to provide services that are close to the people, to provide education and promotional activities that would help serve, achieve long-term goals of changing behaviors and achieving long-term health.
I appreciate your examples, and I appreciate the spirit of not trying to duplicate what's already being done. Second question is, then, can we expect the monies that you're talking about for the match to see those in your budget for 2024? Or would it be before that?
Oh, yes.
It'd be before that because the grant year is July to July, correct?
Yes.
Where are those matches coming from?
So, I mean, the grant budget is prepared around now, in March, and then we go on to make the county budget. So when we do the county budget, the grant sort of feeds into it. And based on what we got for this particular year, we anticipate what we would get for the next year, and then we try to build that into our county budget.
So that's, you've already anticipated that for 2023 since we're on a calendar year, but they're on a fiscal year?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from commissioners?
Just to expand upon the funds, so you've had this type of funds built into your budget in previous years, correct?
Yes, yes. And these are the five grants that we traditionally apply for. We are not applying for any new grants this year, but we are applying for new activities to be performed under each.
Good.
Further questions from the commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to approve the signature page for the grant application.
So move, Mr. Chairman, that we sign that?
Moved and seconded to sign the grant application. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'll sign the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And, Mr. Chairman, as you're signing, I would move that we reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the Board of Health meeting and open again the County Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are back in session and out of County Health. Gabby, you need two of these signed. Next item on our agenda is the vote up or down on the KNRC Prairie Chicken, Lesser Prairie Chicken lawsuit. Your packets, there was a description of this. Mr. Reese, do you have a comment about this?
Actually, I believe your county counselor sat in on the webinar or Zoom meeting Thursday, I believe it was.
And can we take that up now? How did that go? What's your recommendation?
The Zoom meeting really just sort of expanded on the information that was sent out from the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition. Just realistically, at this point in time, the PLF, which is the Pacific Legal Foundation, which is a nonprofit, has offered to provide free legal representation, challenging the 4D rule for the northern distinct population segment of the Lesser Prairie Chicken. That 4D rule restricts farmers and ranchers by requiring grazing plans for livestock and prevents conversion of privately-owned land to tillable eight grades within the Lesser Prairie Chicken range. The goal of the lawsuit, which is proposed, would be to set aside that 4D rule for the northern distinct population segment and remand it back to take further action in accordance with the requirement of the ESA, the Administrative Procedure Act, and the Regulatory Flexibility Act. Basically, what they're challenging is that it's unjustifiably broad and indiscriminate in its ruling, and what they're wanting to do is set favorable legal precedent so that they will have to consider the cost as well as local control over these regulations. It is my understanding that the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks announced their disapproval of the listing because there has been an uptrend in the Lesser Prairie Chicken populations in Kansas. After reading through the materials provided and listening to the Zoom webinar, which was provided, would be my recommendation that we vote yes, that we engage the Pacific Legal Foundation. It is also my understanding from everything that they are kind of the experts in this area, and having that free of charge at this point in time would be beneficial, especially setting that precedent going forward. That rule is set to go into effect on March 27th. So the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition members need to make their votes prior to the end of this month, and then that would start the process and procedure from there.
Last time I checked, we have a Congress that can overrule any proposed regulation. I wish they would be more engaged. They have a job to do. I don't always agree with our new representative, Bob Lewis, but he has a very nice opinion on being regulated by regulators rather than by Congress. Other comments from the commission prior to hearing a motion on this issue?
I think we need to support this, Mr. Chairman. We've had, we've been around the blocks so many times with the Lesser Prairie Chicken that we're getting to know it by its first name. And I wish you would let people manage them. They get along fine as long as it rains.
Aren't you in charge of that, sir?
I haven't had that opportunity lately.
Right. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mine is, first of all, I didn't see any risk to us saying yes to this. And if I remember right, Kara, that if I read the information correctly, if we decide that we want to withdraw in the future because something's not going as we would anticipate it going, that we have the right to do that from the suit. Am I correct on that? I mean, not that I think we have any risk, you know, with, because they're doing this at no cost to us, but I thought we had an out in the information I saw.
The vote today is as a member of the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition to have the KNRC go forward and retain them. There is the ability to retain outside counsel if there are further issues that we believe are out there that need to happen. I believe at some point in time, if it does become contrary to the interest, I mean, just like with any legal representation that you could engage, you could, in theory, withdraw from that.
I thought there was something I read about that. But anyhow, Ms. Chairman, I am in favor of voting yes.
Any comments, Commissioner?
That's what we joined this group for. I personally question the effectiveness of it as much as perhaps the Kansas fishing game, but we are a member, and so I think we need to support that.
My comment on this is, is that our Congressman, Tracy Mann, sent me a real nice book telling me all about what Congress is doing, what he's been doing in Congress. Apparently, we can't get anything done to overrule a simple regulation that I believe a majority of this commission sees as overreach. Thus, is there a motion to vote?
So move, Mr. Chairman, that we support KNRC and their ruling against the Lesser Prairie Chicken. And I would second that we vote yes.
It's been moved and seconded to vote in favor of the PLF litigation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do you have our KNRC number to fill in here? All right, thank you. Okay, I believe that brings us to the added items to the agenda. It has been requested that Robert Reese be reappointed to a two-year term to run from March 2023 through February of 2025 to the Adult Corrections Advisory Board. Is there a motion to so make that appointment?
Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Reese. You're now appointed again for a two-year term. Next item on the agenda is the Sewer District Number Three Resolution. I think everybody's had a chance to review the rewrite of that and open that up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Kara, also join in if you have anything you'd like to add. The outline of the resolution, as I understand it, is to provide for the methodology of billing between the seventy-some lots that are inside the city, but going to use Sewer District Number Three for waste management. Is there any discussion about this proposed resolution from the commissioners?
Not discussion so much, Mr. Chairman, but I would appreciate, in the spirit of full disclosure and transparency, that Robert verbalized a few things with regard to this resolution on how we computed some of the numbers or anything that he might want to reference. I know he's talked about this before, but since the resolution's in front of us for approval, I think it would be appropriate at this time.
All right, very good. This particular resolution is, as stated before, is to identify the fee schedule for those that are outside of the sewer district but within the incorporated city of Garden City so we can provide infrastructure for them for their first phase, Phase A1 of Sunset Terrace. Quite simply, what we talked about before is that the monthly charge that is within the resolution of eighteen dollars and fifty cents is, in essence, reflects what the budgeted cost is for that district to operate, absent the processing fee that is charged by the city. And the city's processing fee has recently gone up to twenty-one fifty per household per month. So that is not included in that. It's assumed that the city will go ahead and charge whatever fee they have in addition to the district's operating fee. In addition to that, we do have a, this is one that we've discussed before, a maintenance fee of twelve dollars per month per household that will be charged as well. How we came up with that dollar amount is, as you recall, when, this is a district that had a forty-year loan on the creation of the district. We went through and refinanced it and closed that in February of last, yes, last year. Overall, the impact to those within the sewer district is approximately that they've paid, where we have assessed taxes on for them to retire the debt. Overall, it's approximately twelve dollars per month is what they spend. We do have another twenty years remaining on that. So what we have done is created a maintenance fee to be placed into the reserve fund, a sinking fund, a capital reserve fund, for future improvements and maintenance of that. And those will be paid by those in Sunset Terrace first phase as they come on, on a monthly basis, twelve dollars per month. And then we have just the one-time fee for connection by the developer of ten thousand dollars. Within your current resolution that created that district some twenty years ago, you have the authorization to charge a certain dollar amount per connection fee, and this is just merely a small fraction of that. And the, just as background on the study that was done, that we initially had Sloan-Meyer and Hancock do, we confirmed that that connection point, which is in the northwest corner of the district, will meet the requirements for them to connect in and not overly tax the current system or compromise any of those that are currently connected to it. That's my briefing, subject to your questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Basically, I guess, Robert, this resolution clarifies exactly what the fees are charged currently, including into the Sunset Terrace addition, but it does not prevent, according to next year's budget, whether those can be increased or not?
That's correct. According to the enabling resolution that created this, we review those dollars amount on an annual basis during the budgeting process. And if there's any adjustments needed, as you recall, we did that in 2020, then we'll make those adjustments and then inform the city of what those, any adjustments would be.
Ms. Shorts, my question to you is, is that the one-time fee in consultation with the city, was that determined to be onerous or acceptable? What was the discussion you had with the city on that one time?
With the fees in this one, there wasn't necessarily something from the city saying what it is that these numbers needed to be. They just needed to know what the numbers were. So I don't know that there's anything saying that that's going to be onerous at this point. Just doing the math, assuming that there are seventy connections, ten thousand divided by that seventy connections is approximately a hundred and forty-three dollars per connection, which really is a pretty low number as far as that goes. In theory, one could have charged five hundred dollars per connection. So really, it's sort of more low than even where it could be in the spirit of making sure that this development can go forward in our community.
And my question back to you, Robert, was in describing in this resolution that the current additional charge of twelve dollars is similar to what the pages of Sewer District Three are going to be amortized. In other words, is it fair to the existing? In other words, is it fair to the existing patrons of sewer district three?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that was the entire intent. We did not want to have the two-hundred-and-eighty-three connections there in the district, in essence, subsidizing this. And so this was the fairest way that we could come up with, is that they pay an equal share or proportionate share.
The last part of this resolution requires and anticipates either amendment or a new interlocal agreement. What's our timeframe on getting that accomplished?
I think the first phase of that one was getting these numbers set, and then I have already been in discussions, even as recently as last week, with Mr. Dummermuth about the numbers. There is a meeting set for later this afternoon regarding the pre-construction portion of this one, so that we can start moving forward with that. I don't know that I have a specific timeline for the commission yet as far as when that's going to be set, but I will have a timeline for you, a better understanding of that by our next commission meeting, to be able to let you know where that's going to be.
That's acceptable. Yes, sir.
I do have one additional question. We keep referencing the Phase 1A, which is the first phase of Sunset Terrace. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the second phase of this will not be connected into sewer district three. Is this the only phase of Sunset Terrace that we have the question about?
That is correct. That's our understanding, as we went through this project, is that this was the only one that they needed assistance in providing sanitary sewers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And isn't the reason for why this area goes through sewer district three is because of elevation?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, and what is the resolution number, Gabby? Ten? I would move that we approve Resolution 10-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Finney County Resolution 10-23 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And do you have that resolution for signature? Okay, I'm going to declare a brief recess, and we'll reconvene at nine-thirty and take up our reports from the administrators and others at that time.
Our agenda is our staff reports. The only thing that I would say on board governance is that we have a work session that was published to start at 9:30. We'll take it up as soon as we get done with our regular session. Mr. Administrator, do you have a report, sir?
Yes, just briefly. You did receive in your packet the financials, monthly financials, so hopefully those are an easy read for you. Okay, more than that. And we can do that during the budgetary? Yes. A couple of activities here that you, Commission has coming up. Besides today's work session, you do have a work session this Thursday at 8:30, and that is with IMA. They'll be going over some various approaches for consideration by the Board on health insurance. And then additionally, I know that some of you have signed up already for the Chamber banquet. And if you haven't received your tickets already from, I think Jenny has those, and we still have some, a few slots left in that. And then, this one here will be a refresher for you. As you recall, last year, actually almost this time or a little bit later than this, last year, about the May timeframe, we talked about providing a match for Ideatech. And Ideatech is the fiber provider that we used when we did our fiber run back in 2020. If you recall that, we spent about a little over $2 million, $2.1 million for the fiber run from a Sparks money for that project. And then, last year, about the May-June timeframe, about May timeframe, they had an opportunity to apply for a grant to extend the fiber run, which will be an advantage to the county. We pledged $400,000 of the ARPA funds for that. Well, last month, they were awarded just under $8 million from the state of Kansas for their fiber run project. And they'll be running approximately 150 miles of fiber in Finney County. So, and that will, that will help us directly as we look at extending fiber from our current southernmost point as it goes west towards Holcomb and so forth. So, we're really fortunate about that. They do have a ribbon cutting tomorrow, it was Wednesday, at the Chamber. I believe it's 1:30 if I remember. 11 o'clock. So, but I, but I would want to, just for the record, even though we talked about this last year, make certain that we formalize the $400,000 contribution from the ARPA funds for that project. Any other questions? That's the basis of my report at this point in time. Ask it again. Ask it again, please. Doug, I believe if, and I'm gonna look at Doug on this.
With this expansion that they're doing, there's 150-plus miles of fiber being ran within Finney County, and the vast majority of it this time is actually going to rural residents. So, so yes, to answer that.
Sorry, Gabby. I, I believe that they'll be announcing more of that and explaining more of that from 11 to 12 in the Chamber office on Wednesday, as the Administrator just alluded to.
Thank you.
Anything else for the Administrator? Okay, thank you. We'll hear from the County Councilor.
I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add other than what I've already talked about this morning. As I indicated, I will be going to the pre-construction meeting this afternoon for the Sunset Terrace addition to just kind of see where things are at with that one at this point, and to further things with Mr. Dummermuth as far as that interlocal agreement goes for that. And hopefully have an update within my report for that at our next County Commission meeting.
Any questions for the Councilor? Our department monthly reports. Anyone want the opportunity to address the Commission with regard to their monthly report? The one question that I did have, we have a report here from the Fairgrounds. It's something that we talked about in planning. Ms. Schertz is with regard to events at the Three Eye Building. Have we got a plan on that as far as the permitting?
Your Emergency Management Director, Paul Reeceley, is working with the PD and Fire Department to kind of shore up some of the processes there. But at this point in time, other than what, what we have in place, not anticipated to have any additional permitting. So, we've got a little, a lot of refining to do as far as the amount of participants utilizing that facility during specific events. And Key Component is working with the Fire Department locally on that, on capacity and so forth.
Any questions from Commissioners with regard to the Public Works monthly report that we received? Anything to, I, I don't believe Mackenzie's here today. She is? Do you have anything for us today? Sorry, I didn't see you there when I walked out.
That's okay. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. Just a brief update. Country Acres, which is the development just east of city limits, they were approved by Public Works last week to continue dirt work on forming the streets and the ditches. They're gonna go ahead and continue that dirt work and can't do anything besides that until the water plans have been approved by the city. And then, as Kara mentioned, there is a pre-construction meeting today for Sunset Terrace Estates, Phase 1A, that I will be attending as well. And then, any questions from me, for me, related to development? Randall Estates is still, we're still waiting on those new cost estimates from the developer, so we haven't received those yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like we're next to the meetings and agenda and upcoming events. I believe everybody has that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I was gonna have it in my report, but I think it's appropriate here. In April, on April 5th, we need to add to our meetings, if you will, if we want to participate and just know that Hunden Strategic Partners will be in town that day. It's not gonna be an official meeting of sorts, but we may be calling on people to participate and look at Fairgrounds and other properties within the county regarding the assessment and audit of facilities in Finney County.
Well, let's get that on the calendar. That Hunden's going to be here.
April 5th.
April 5th, and we don't have a time yet, so.
No.
We'll just keep that going in the schedule. And since we're on that subject, why don't we go ahead and discuss that planning and assessment? If you would, you chaired that meeting and give a short report on it, please.
Well, we did have, okay, Mr. Chairman, we did have a brief meeting with Hunden via Zoom last week, and we just, it was just an organizational thing, talking about schedule and so forth. But the plan is for Hunden to come into town April 5th and do a day-long assessment audit. And then, within a 10-week period, have a report back to us with regard to facilities in Finney County, ones that could, can be used, ones that may need to be upgraded, ones that are missing from our package of facilities for meetings, conferences, sports, the whole package, to attract others to Finney County.
Very good. I would encourage anybody that can attend to attend that meeting with Hunden regarding our countywide evaluation. All right. Last thing on the agenda is the County Commissioner reports. I'll start on my left here. Commissioner trees.
Most of my meetings that was scheduled the last two weeks have been canceled, so nothing there. The only really report I had was I attended Legislative Coffee Session, as most of you guys did as well. So, pretty short for me. This, couple of things coming up this week, but nothing in the past.
Commissioner Jones.
Legislative Coffee spent a day in Scott City with the BIL. Is that the acronym for that? Yeah.
Bipartisan Infrastructure.
And it was quite interesting. I think there's a lot of possibilities. We can pick up some grant money there for some different projects. We'll discuss that more when we get to our planning session. Also, we had a phone call with Lana on the junior colleges' request, and talked to some folks up at K-State, and got them in touch with her. And hopefully we'll proceed and utilize facilities that are being underutilized right now. Let's see, there was something. I think that's the major things I did. Oh, yep. I'll conclude with that.
All right. Commissioner Pishney.
I have a number of things, so Duane can go ahead and start his stopwatch. But the first, and they are not necessarily in order of how they occurred, but the first thing I have on my list is we, Larry and I, let's see, and I know Jerry was there, I don't think Duane was, the highway meeting that we had a week or so ago. And there was a KDOT planning tool, and I was gonna ask Robert and Curtis whether that's a tool that we're using, because it's one that Todd, whatever his last name is, presented that afternoon. And it just appears to be a great tool to help us with budgeting with regard to public works projects. So, I hope that we are, and if we aren't, I hope that we will do that in the future. On the BIL meeting in Scott City that Larry has referenced, the thing that I noted is, we've got to get on it right now because, with regard to grants, because it's a five-year program, and we're a year and a half into the five-year program, and it's quite a process to be approved to apply for some of these grants. So, we can talk about that more in the work session, but it is something that needs immediate attention, in my opinion, if we're gonna try to get grant money. The city was, and we, we signed on as a supporter of their grant, and they were awarded a grant, I think it was for wastewater, if I'm not mistaken, just recently. And so, there's been some, some use of that grant process within our community. I did attend the Planning Commission meeting, and Vicki can correct me if I'm wrong, but in that meeting, they did discuss several things, and a couple of them are gonna come to us in the future with rezoning, replating. But one was with regard to storage containers, and if I'm not mistaken, that was defeated with regard to requesting the storage container uses by a four-to-three vote the other day. So, there was a lot of discussion about that, but it was, that particular request was defeated in the Planning Commission. I did attend the Extension District meeting, the first of the week, and, or first of the last week. They're gonna have three board members that will, positions will be open, and it appears that the three may not run this next election. So, that board is comprised of Scott County and Finney County board members. And if anyone is interested in 4H and, and extension-related things, we would highly encourage people to put their name on the ballot by June 1st in order to be considered for election. Legislative Coffee, I mentioned the Hunden thing on April 5th. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention as far as calendar of events, is the Extension District announced that Dr. Linton, the President of Kansas State, will be out in our area on April 25th. Well, he'll be here for two or three days. But April 25th, there will be a public reception, not really reception, he wants feedback from the public. I don't know the time of that yet, I don't believe, but mark April 25th, and we're to receive an invitation to that. I am headed to the Water Conference tomorrow in Dodge City with regard to Ark Valley watershed. And I, were you going to that, Larry? Okay. Oh, you're going tomorrow? Yeah, okay. And then, I had Ideatech written down, but we've already talked about that on the 11 o'clock Wednesday thing. And then, Mr. Chairman, I think it's worth noting that Commissioner Dave Jones is not here today due to health issues, and we wish him very, we wish him well, and, and offer our prayers to him for a speedy recovery, and hope that he'll be back with us at our meeting either Thursday or our next Commission meeting.
Mr. Jones, you had one more thing?
Yes, I always forgot. Attended the Committee on Aging. That's probably why I forgot. But they are in the process of looking at improving their facility, either expanding that one or building a new one, and they're working with several entities. So, I think that's one of those things we need to put on our long-range radar to get ready, either to assist or do something, because I, they've got some really good ideas. And, and their usage of the current facility is going up, and they need, the desire for different programs are increasing. So, if we want to make our community, you know, try to maintain it and keep some of our seniors here and active, we need to look at this facility.
All right. Thank you very much. My report includes attending the Compass Board Meeting last month. I failed to mention it last session, but I'll attend again this week. Really exciting time for Compass here in the 19 counties in southwest Kansas that they serve. Also like to announce that LivWell, Finney County Health Coalition, received a $35,000 grant as part of Governor Laura Kelly's announcement for suicide prevention programs and organizations. And it was wonderful to be on the list and see that Finney County stood out amongst the people that were providing this. Because a majority of everybody who received any money, I'll just go down the list just to demonstrate my frustration sometimes with people in Topeka thinking that Western Kansas is still Kansas. Manhattan, Clay Center, Lawrence, Lawrence, Olatha, Paola, Seneca, Chanute, Wichita, Belleville, that's way west, I guess, Manhattan, Ark City, Wichita, and Wichita. So, Garden City's very fortunate to have the Coalition and our other health services be active and dynamic in receiving this assistance to help awareness and improving mental health in every community, including, I'm dovetailing this now together with Compass, because Compass now has an intervention house available for mental health awareness, and also for community assistance. And for juveniles, a 10-bed facility right there, close to their main office. Wow, what a great improvement for our community and a resource for those people who are struggling with mental health issues, including those that are teenagers or youth. And this suicide prevention with LivWell, I'm hopeful that these agencies can work together to bring about better mental health. And it goes to one of the goals that we're gonna talk about here in a little bit, is providing for the public general welfare, which is one of the constitutional duties of this Commission. I attended the Highway Meeting, and it's interesting to see, from my perspective as a newcomer to this Commission, how the folks in Topeka like to talk down to us and tell us all the things that they're doing that's so very nice to us, including our Legislative Coffee, where all of us attended, and we spent too much time on an education bill that's not going to go anywhere, it's never gonna be implemented into law. But we did finally get around to taxes, which is another issue in our Planning Commission. Legislative Coffee, I recommend to any taxpayer who's really interested in what's going on in Topeka. Our representatives do a very good job of explaining what's going on, what their committee assignments are. And it is a really chance to have some interaction with government at the state level right here in southwest Kansas. The last thing on my report is, is that we do have a planning meeting coming up following our adjournment of this regular session, and hopefully we can work on hammering out some things for our new 2024 budgeting process. That's all I have. Is there anything else on our agenda or anything else that any Commissioner wish to bring forth before the Commission at this time? If not, motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that we adjourn, and we will move right into a work session. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned. We will start work planning session.